Yes, sorry, we are now.
All right. My body's not working.
Test one, test, test, hello?
Hello?
Yes, oops. Can you hear? I've got it open here.
Is it working? Okay.
I'm working, yeah.
Until somebody tells me otherwise. Carla, can you please call the roll?
He's really low, yes, I'm sorry. Fish?
Here.
Hardesty?
Here.
Udaley? Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Good morning. We'll now hear about the rules of order and decorum from legal counsel. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. If it does not, you may be ruled out of order. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Please remain seated in council chambers unless entering or exiting. If you are filming the proceedings, please do not use bright lights or disrupt the meeting. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you very much. First up is communications.
Item 393, request of David Keef Davis to address council regarding violating the DOJ settlement and targeting of cop watchers by G4S Security, the Portland Police, and the city.
Next individual, please.
394, request of Injured and Pissed Off to address council regarding Wanted Honest Attorney, fifth printing.
Good morning.
The last time I spoke here was February 13th of this year, and that's the AM session. And my next meeting date that I'm talking here is July 3rd of 2013, and it's for a request of Wanted Honest Attorney Helen Keller plus the ACLU. Even Helen Keller wasn't deaf, dumb, and blind. She was a founding member, apparently, the ACLU, and they recently lost a case, I didn't know that, against the Portland Police, that they addressed individuals with several rights violations. A woman had her nose broken by the Portland Police, and they lost the case. So apparently, they represent people other than just incarcerated people. My address is 1212 Southwest Clay Apartment 217, that's Portland, Oregon, 97201. And if you look at the cases, or look at Google and type in Injured and Pissed Off, a person can research the times and dates that I'd spoke here, as well as presented evidence such as the unwanted guest article from Malamute Week of August 9th of 2006. And what this is, is the civil conspiracy and conflict of interest of the city of Portland and the county. When I spoke here the 13th of April, I had said that it was City Court, that the county attorney had dismissed the case. It was County Court is where they had dismissed the valid restraining order after six dog attacks by the same dog in less than six years, and it actually ended up a seven within six years. And of course, there's the county animal control that you yourself, Ted Wheeler, were in charge of, and wrote a letter after me explaining that the Oregon state laws on service animal attacks being against a law to even interfere. And by the way, they apparently got rid of Cascade Management at my building after running it for 20 years.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next individual, please, Carla.
395, request of Robert Barstad to address council regarding bait and switch, Vash voucher.
Nice to see y'all.
Nice to see you too. Thanks for being here.
Well, my name's Robert Barstad. Yeah, so we got a few challenges going. I do have associate applied science in paralegal, so I feel kind of bad being here, but yeah, I moved into an apartment, you know, they'll show you one, and then, okay, okay, we got you one, but it's not the one they showed you. Okay, I can live with that. And now I'm in the process of getting a one-bedroom apartment, and I started the paperwork. By the time we came to, are you moving, or do we need to do some more paperwork, they gave that unit to somebody else. And now, the problem is, I rely on, I'm thinking Article 2 UCC on the manager's expertise. This one neighbor and I just don't click. And since I'm on the HUD-VASH program, I've had VA meetings in my apartment, and these people stand outside your door and listen to see what's going on. There's no right to privacy. They gossip, slander, defamation of character. I had a job at the hospital, and they're even calling up there, inquiring and stirring up trouble. I'm thinking privety and standing, it's none of their business. But I have an apartment now, and it's good, but it's stalking and harassing me from the day one. And so I put on my thinking hat, and I've been making little files along the way. I might just type up some paper and get a pro bono lawyer and rattle their treehouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 396, request of Charles Bridge Crane Johnson to address council regarding celebrating months, weeks, days, 58-ish days from communications requests to actual communication.
Good morning.
Good morning, councilors. Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, gotta love this thing here, the echo reverb. Thank you. So it's actually even, as you noted, it was when Carla read the thing, it's even difficult almost to schedule what to talk about, because we live in a very chaotic, tumultuous world where a lot of things change in 58 days. But as Mr. Injured and Pissed Off pointed, if a current event really resonated with a citizen, and they wanted to speak to the City Council, and they went to Carla's office, it would be in July before they would be able to address you. Now, some of you know a much better way, because you used to serve as the chair of the Multnomah Board of, County Board of Commissioners, and you know that that body does much better than the Portland City Council at transparency, and especially at constituent inclusion. Any person can show up the same day and request to engage publicly like this with their elected officials. But no big shock, the Portland City Council has not tried to emulate better governments. There are, however, some sad similarities in the shortcomings of the Multnomah Board of Commissioners and the, here in our Portland City Councilors. Together, you fund the Joint Office of Homeless Services, which of course is a misnomer, because it actually provides zero services. It really just funds services through other people, primarily contracts through TPI, almost a single-source provider, although there's homeless solutions and all that. Sometimes here, especially across the street at the Board of Commissioners, there are budget modifications when one bureau or department wants to adjust even half of an FTE. Unfortunately, through the Joint Office of Homeless Services and their providers, we don't have anything close to that level of oversight or accountability. Transition projects funded through the Joint Office of Homeless Services just decided to reduce their weekday service hours by 27%. So you think you're assisting homeless people, and your primary homeless service provider that used to open at 7:00 AM now opens one hour later and closes two hours earlier. Now, that place is kind of toxic, so although I did go there this morning, I didn't ask them if that means that they're now open during their formerly closed lunch hour. They used to close at noon and reopen at 1:00. Hopefully, y'all can find out, have more resilience to deal with those people than I do, and you can ask them if they're now open from noon to 1:00, or if they really did chop 3.75 hours off of their open hours. And you really shouldn't be having to ask this question. When the Joint Office of Homeless Services, $100,000 a year director, does the budget for the $150,000 director, annual director of transition projects, you guys should have got a white paper and report saying how this is actually going to improve anything. Supposedly, they're keeping the same number of FTEs on staff, and they're going to do some miraculous super work in the middle of the day, but there's not one piece of paper, because there's zero accountability. Thank you.
Excuse me, Charles?
Yes, Commissioner.
When was this decision made to cut the hours of?
It was implemented on Monday. I don't know anything about the decision-making process. When I spoke to the director of the Portland Rescue Mission at the Home for Everyone Board Meeting last week, it took him by surprise. I don't think they communicated with a single other service provider in the city, so you'll have to ask them about what their process was and when it started, but it took effect Monday morning.
So it's really going to have an impact on people who are accustomed to showing up at 7:00?
Yeah, one thing that you might also mention is, like, homeless people actually often have Android phone devices. If you go to Google and look at transition projects on the map, you can see that Google tracks what Android phones connect there when, but there's no indication at home that they did any kind of that research or checked their own database to see, you know, how many people are shifting from those last two hours of the day into the middle of the day and how they're going to address them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate.
And one more individual, Carla, the last person, please.
Item 397, request of Tiffany Hammer to address council regarding crime and safety at Southwest 14th and Montgomery.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. Give it to Carla. Carla.
I want, I would like to thank Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners for your time. I am Tiffany Hammer, and I'm here to share a story and raise awareness and change. I'm not a professional speaker, so I apologize. However, I am a homeowner over at Southwest 14th and Montgomery at the base of the Southwest Hills Goose Hollow, one block from PSU Campus. In the last year, we have noticed an increase in numbers of illegal campers on ODOT land around PSU Goose Hollow in our street. Many of us here in this room have had multiple attempted break-ins, homes robbed, unwanted visitors in our homes requiring police to physically remove them. Most importantly, we have been attacked and threatened. I won't even mention the loss of possessions not bolted down or our daily car break-ins. We all know, and more concerned about personal safety. In August of 2017, there were two illegal campers across the street plotting to rob my house. They watched me leave, but I came back too soon. One hid in my bush by my front door as the lookout, while the other camper jumped my fence to break in through the back. I parked my car and my son, and I walked up to put the key in the door. That's when I noticed the very same camper who broke in my house a month prior was there again. She was yelling into my backyard to someone else, saying the cops are coming. Then Brian Langford came barreling over the fence with a three-foot tree branch in his hand. He was yelling and followed us, and then he got me and my son locked in our car. When we were trapped in our car, he became aggressive, waving the stick at the car and striking the ground. I called 911 screaming for help. The cops came and took the weapon, and they let him go with no arrest and no bed available, and warned him not to come to my street or property because I was prosecuting for aggravated assault and attempted burglary. Two hours later, he came back, and he stood in front of my place again. I called the police again, and they cleared the entire ODOT encampment. No prosecution happened. This is considered a petty crime, right? We understand there is a direct correlation living next to an encampment and suffering the higher crime and threats to your personal safety, also the shared helpless feeling from being the victim. In the past two weeks alone, my neighbor whom helps me water the roses out in the ODOT land we've adopted was attacked by an illegal camper who threw a brick at him twice. And this career criminal is living at the portable toilet comfort station and was out on probation. Is this a petty crime too? My other neighbors randomly attacked and beat down in the face while walking out of our neighborhood PSU Starbucks a block down from the comfort station, like a week and a half ago. Another petty crime. Last year, my neighbor's house had a brick thrown through the front window from a camper looking to break in, but they were home. The same home still traumatized over the brick and lack of prosecution suffered yet another petty crime in January. A camper attempting to break in through the back door caught on video. The cops came and arrested, or the cops came and removed the camper onto our street. They went into my other neighbor's home, did the same thing. These petty crimes are a big deal to us, especially if you have to stare into the eyes of the petty crime offender illegally camping, stealing in front of your home. In addition, these known criminal campers are showing warning signs to all of us, throwing verbal threats, saying they're going to F us up when we walk by, or claiming their territory by holding weapons like lead pipes, machetes, and knives. I encourage you to walk past these encampments around Southwest Montgomery, especially near dusk, when the camps settles in, or during the summertime when we hit our violent peak. Keep in mind, these campers are using portable gas tanks now. We have suffered in our neighborhood five propane tank explosions. This alone is alarming to our personal safety, and these explosions are happening in warmer weather, not the cold months. Even more discouraging, after my home break-in, I'm reading the Oregonian, June 2018, I'm sure you know this article, they featured Brian Langford as the homeless camper unfairly being targeted for arrests by police. Over 220 now, I couldn't believe they would use Langford as the poster boy for policy change that we see in Portland today, the very same man that threatens people, including me and my child. Have we lost our war? This man is clearly so broken and doesn't accept services he's provided. I feel sad and helpless for every resistant camper out there not accepting the services offered to them daily now. Brian and other violent criminals shouldn't be in our public. Do we need to be stabbed and killed for prosecution? Can we even put a cap on how many offenses a person can do? This is unacceptable if they hit the 220 mark. I now keep a log of all the career criminals at my encampment who get arrested and released.
Tiffany, you're a little over, but if I could, let me jump in with a question or two.
Yes.
And I have a comment as well.
Sorry, I sped up so fast.
No worries. And we have your written testimony as well. So we have a significant handout from you that has photographs. You mentioned in your opening remarks that this is largely ODOT property. Is there any property of Portland Parks and Rec that's involved?
Yes.
What's that?
It's on 14th and Hall as well. It's a ODOT land that the city has adopted in terms of landscaping and whatnot right next to it as well.
I see.
And all the public sidewalks that are on 14th Avenue in Montgomery, which Portland State students use to access the classes and also the farmer's market, and our only way into downtown. If you live in the Southwest Hills, you probably know this street all too well.
You have, I'm just looking through the materials here, did you press charges against any of the individuals that you mentioned?
I've tried several times, and it's still in process. I'm almost up to my statute of limitations. It's a rather hard process, which I don't understand, but I know that there's financial restraints with the district attorney's office, but a lot of us who have pending district attorney cases know this game all too well. It's hard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, and I just had a brief comment. Apparently, I have a new microphone as well. First of all, thank you for being here, and I have received many calls from the neighborhood, and I've had many conversations with many people, so I want you to know, I am keenly aware of this situation. I want to thank you for planting the roses that you planted.
Thank you.
I think it was a nice addition to that area, so thank you for doing that. I know you took some heat for that, not for me, I want to be very clear. I also want to say, I do believe the police are doing the best that they can with the resources that they have, and I know that senior-level people from the police borough have met with people in that immediate neighborhood. I don't know if they've met with you specifically, but they have gone out there to try to better ascertain the needs and how they could be of help. We've also had social service providers far more engaged both on the property immediately adjacent to I-405 and the on-ramp, and people keep cutting the fence and going on to the ODOT property, sort of in the middle of I-405 as well. And we, I know we've been expending considerable resources in that area as well. What we do not control here is the rest of the criminal justice system. The police, when they are called, they will eventually make it, depending upon their workload, but we do not control the jail capacity. We do not control the prosecutorial capacity at all. That's the independently elected district attorney. We do not control the court system. And the frustration that you have explained about police ultimately in a public safety environment, like the guy throwing a brick, they will come and do their job, and then they will see the person back on the street a few hours later, is as frustrating to them and to me as it is to you
Yeah.
...that there aren't adequate consequences for truly violent behavior. We are redoubling our efforts around keeping that and all of the ODOT right-of-ways clean. That was part of the, frankly, what created the frustration in my mind about the need for the city to take over the ODOT right-of-ways and maintain those right-of-ways. I think we're better at it. I think we're better at providing social service interventions for people who truly need it in a humane way, and we are better at remediating the camps once they are there, particularly if they're creating a public health or a environmental hazard as they are in that particular location. So we're doing the best we can. We hear you. We understand that it's very frustrating for you and others in your neighborhood, but I don't want you to think we're blowing you off. We most certainly are not. I am keenly aware of that, and I'm in communication with a lot of people on a very regular basis about it. I really appreciate you coming in.
I want to thank you, and I also want to thank the police that have been giving great customer service and listening to our pleas.
I'm glad to hear that. Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you for coming in and taking the time, and a great testimony, very well delivered. Have you spoken at the county board?
To where?
To the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners.
That's my next stop.
Great, because I think-
And I'm not, I'm not a political, I don't know much about the political system in terms of where I go to exercise my voice, but I'm now learning a lot with this whole safety thing. That's affected my kids and my street. It takes a mama bear to step up and do something.
Throw the spaghetti at the wall and sit at six, but I think that the county board has opportunities for testimony, and I'm glad you're going to go there.
Appreciate it, thank you for your time. Any other questions?
Commissioner Fish.
I just want to say, first of all, your mom is Susan Hammer, is that right?
She's my aunt, Sue Hammer, yes.
Your aunt?
Yeah.
Well, she's a very highly regarded person in our community as a mediator and a former city club leader, and so that's the family connection. She's your aunt?
Yes, she is.
Very good. And, look, we are very clear here. We're not talking about status, we're talking about behavior, and your materials make it very clear you're talking about behaviors.
Correct.
And behaviors where people engage in illegal conduct is not sanctioned under any circumstances. Status, people who are forced to live outside because of economic reasons or health reasons or whatever, is a different matter. You frame this in terms of behavior.
Correct.
And I'll certainly talk to my park rangers and see what our jurisdiction is in that area, and we'll work with the mayor's office, and we thank you for taking the time to come in and share your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
I complete, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hardesty, I apologize, my fault, sorry.
That's okay. I want to thank you for coming in. I've received several letters from your neighbors as well, saying that you would be their voice in this chamber today. We have, we have many big issues in the city of Portland. One of them is a lack of housing people can afford to live in. Another is a lack of services for people when they need it. Another is, clearly, you have great pictures of people committing criminal activities, and so I can feel your frustration as a community member who says, but look, it's not like I'm just telling you, this is what I think, I have a picture, and then to see no outcome from that. I would really, really, really encourage you and your neighbors to stay focused on criminal behavior, right? Because criminal behavior is something that we can do something about, but for grace, none of us know whether we'd be sleeping under a bridge. And so I'm very empathetic that your children have to walk by some of this garbage. I mean, suppose we put a lot more garbage cans on the streets, so maybe a low-level solution is to put more garbage cans in that community, because clearly there's an increase of houseless people in that community. But again, thank you very much for coming. Your voice is strong and powerful. You don't have to know how government works to know that it doesn't always work well.
Yes.
And your voice will help us be able to make better decisions.
Thank you.
And so thank you for coming, and thank you, quite frankly, for really addressing issues of criminal behavior, because that's what we can do something about. Thank you.
Mayor, can I do one more thing?
Commissioner Fish.
Tiffany, you have the advantage today of someone not showing up, so we have a little extra time, and since you took the time, we're engaging you. I think you also said there are some neighbors of yours that are here?
Yes, I have actual victims. The one-
So, could people either stand if they're able, or raise their hands, just so that we know who's joining you today? Okay, very good. You've obviously done a good job organizing, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for coming in. Thank you. Carla, have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, we have item 403.
403, call the role on the remainder of the consent agenda, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. Please call the first-time certain item 398.
Adopt the fiscal year 2018-19 spring supplemental budget and make other budget-related changes.
And colleagues, just an administrative note, Commissioner Hardesty is absent at 11:30. We have a number of emergency items, so I may change the order to some degree in order to make sure that we get through the emergency items. Colleagues, before us we have the Spring Supplemental Budget, otherwise known as the Spring Bump. We discussed my proposed Spring Bump at the work session last week. The Spring Bump is primarily meant to provide year-end financial projections, make current-year budget adjustments, and true-up costs between fiscal years. This includes general fund program carryovers, which total 10.4 million in my proposed supplemental budget. Bureaus may also request compensation set aside of its budget at each fiscal year for cost-of-living adjustments and health benefit increases. My proposed supplemental budget allocates 8.1 million in requested compensation set-aside resources. Bureaus may also appropriate new resources or request general fund contingency for urgent and unforeseen needs that can't be accommodated within their current budget year allocation. In my proposed Spring Supplemental Budget, I'm allocating $262,000 for the Office of Community Technology Relocation, $600,000 to close an anticipated current-year budget gap for Portland Parks and Recreation, and setting aside $500,000 in contingency to provide parks with some level of assurance that they may encumber necessary materials and services costs before the year end. This morning, interim budget director Jessica Kennard will walk us through the current ordinance, and then we will hear in second amendments to the ordinance, and after that, we'll provide opportunity for public testimony before final deliberations and voting. I will now turn this over to interim director Kennard to talk about the Spring Supplemental Budget ordinance. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Jessica Kennard, and I'm city budget director, and I'm here with Jane Marie Ford, our supplemental budget coordinator. As the mayor mentioned, we held a work session last week on April 30th where we reviewed the details of the mayor's proposed supplemental budget. Today, we're going to review again the mayor's proposed bump briefly, discuss proposed amendments, and have public testimony. For the benefit of listeners in the audience and at home, I want to briefly provide contextual information related to the bump that we discussed last week. The Spring Bump is the second of three budget monitoring processes we undertake each year. It's primarily meant, as the mayor mentioned, to provide year-end financial projections, make current-year budget adjustments, and true-up costs between fiscal years. In total, proposed bump changes will leave a balance of $1 million in unrestricted general fund contingency to address any unanticipated needs through the remainder of the current fiscal year. In addition, 32.2 million has been budgeted in general fund contingency policy set-aside, which includes 6.6 million for the Anderson lawsuit repayment, 2 million for overhead true-up, 10.4 million for program carryovers to be budgeted in next year's budget, $500,000 for parks to be able to request for encumbrance carryovers, and 2 million for capital set-aside, and finally, 10.6 million, which will also be allocated as part of the 1920 budget process. While bump processes focus on the current-year budget, during the Spring Bump, there is opportunity for council to make decisions which simultaneously influence next year's budget process, and this is primarily done through program carryovers and by setting aside one-time contingency resources for allocation in next year's budget. As such, there's some alignment, there is alignment with the mayor's proposed bump and resources that have been allocated in the mayor's 1920 proposed budget, and our office will ensure that any amendments that are approved today, which affect next year's budget, will also be incorporated into the approved budget discussion that we will be having with you all next week. In relation to the cannabis fund resources, I know that there is a desire to have increased transparency around those resources, so I wanted to mention that last week Commissioner Hardesty had asked if there were any changes to the cannabis fund. Want to highlight that the mayor's proposed bump does include requested program carryover of $700,000 in unspent cannabis funds and civic life's budget from the current fiscal year, rebudgeting that into the 1920 for community grants related to workforce development and records expungement. There are also a few technical adjustments to the cannabis fund to balance the fund allocation accounts based on some changes that, just technical adjustments from the fall bump. These funds and other projected fund balances will be explicitly discussed as part of the approved budget work session next Tuesday. One other change of note, the Spring Bump ordinance authorizes the creation of a new affordable housing development fund to track transactions related to the funding of affordable housing projects, primarily from proceeds from geo-bonds approved under measures 26179 and resources provided by other government entities. So this new fund's being created in response to the change in the service delivery model for both Portland and Metro bond projects, which enables us to now give those funds to third-party developers, moving from a city-owned construction back towards, again, the bureau's traditional gap financing model. So there's one, in terms of amendments, we have heard that there is one technical amendment that the mayor will be introducing, and which updates Exhibits 1 through 3. As you're aware, we're implementing a new budget software, and this is the first supplemental budget in the new system, and so there were just some technical issues that we remedied and need to be entered into the record. We have heard of, I think you have in front of you, the amendments that went out, that we are aware of in the Tuesday memo yesterday, and we are also open, of course, to entering into the record and hearing any other amendments that folks would like to bring on the floor. If there are questions, I would be happy to answer those. Otherwise, we could move towards the amendment process.
If there's no questions on the technical amendments, I'm going to go ahead and move those.
Second?
I'll go ahead and read it into the record. Substitute Exhibits 1 through 3 to reflect technical corrections to budget tables reflecting deck service adjustments to various funds, grant fund appropriation true-up, and adjustments in the workers' comp self-insurance operating fund, and solid waste management fund. Now, if that doesn't sound exciting, what does? Commissioner Fish has seconded it. It's on the table. Is there any further discussion? I'll leave it open until after testimony. Commissioner Hardesty?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jennifer. I had a question. I was hoping that you would explain the reserve fund carryover from the Fire Bureau and what that request was and what the Budget Office decision was around that request.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. So the Fire Bureau has requested 2.45 million carryover of general fund resources into next year to fund the replacement of their breathing apparatus equipment. This was funding that was appropriated by council as part of this year's budget, the 1819 adopted budget. There were three different sources that it came from. 1.1 million was allocated from capital set-aside. A little over 700,000 was allocated through a program carryover from the 1718 budget, and then finally, about 640,000 was allocated in one-time general fund resources. And council at the time determined that this was an urgent need, an urgent equipment that needed to be replaced. The bureau has since gone through the procurement process and actually been successful in acquiring a FEMA grant in the amount of $2 million. The original estimate was, I believe, around $3 million for the equipment, so they have a, they are anticipating having an excess balance, and in this year, they requested, for, sorry, for 1920's budget, they requested that council set-aside funds to start fostering a reserve to ensure that they don't need to come back to council to ask for $3 million again when it comes time to replace these, this equipment again. So the city budget office's recommendation, rather than allocate new ongoing resources for a reserve, was to allow the bureau to carry over the full balance that they have currently, and then whatever, they anticipate finalizing the procurement in July, whatever was left over, we recommended that that be placed as sort of a jumpstart into a reserve. It is anticipated that there will be available balance, and the exact amount is not known, but it could be up to $1 million. So it is, it is resources, again, that, and then it's part of the mayor's proposal as well, that that money would go into a reserve for the next appropriation of this equipment.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Fritz?
To this point, I support having a reserve, that the bureau builds a reserve to pay for the equipment in 15 years. Given the number of urgent needs that we have in this year's budget, it doesn't seem reasonable to set aside the general fund one time that we gave last year and leave it in a bank for 15 years for a purpose that it's not these, it's not like a transportation or other, or parks maintenance need that if we don't address it, it gets worse. These, the equipment works for 15 years. So I have an amendment to decrease the general fund program carryover for the Portland Fire and Rescue, pass this out, thank you, by $642,511, which was the amount that was allocated in general fund discretionary one-time resources last year, and return these resources to the general fund for allocation in the general fund contingency policy set-aside for appropriation in financial year 2019-20, and update Exhibits 1 through 6 to reflect this change.
For purposes of discussion, I'll second this.
Fritz, number one, and we'll leave that open for public testimony as well. And Commissioner Hardesty, do you have an amendment?
Yes, Mayor. I thought we had submitted already an amendment requesting a carryover of $50,000 from our office budget. Our plan is to use those resources to continue to engage the community and help them better understand how city government operates and how to get their needs met. That was resources carried over from the last administration, and that was the request that we are putting in front of this body today. I'm sorry, Jennifer, you do have that request in front of you.
Yes, and I, and I think it is at the bottom of the page of, that has been handed out to you all. I could read it into the record if you'd like.
Please.
Sure. Motion to make the following adjustments to the supplemental budget as proposed: Decrease bureau expenses in the Commissioner of Public Affairs general fund by $50,000, and set-aside funds for program carryover and allocation in the fiscal year 2019-20 budget for community events and engagement. The office plans to hold at least five listening sessions to engage community members about issues that are important to them. This funding will allow the office to rent spaces for events, pay for interpretation services, and other associated materials and services. Savings exists primarily within personal services to fully fund this request. The resources to hold these events will not be available in the fiscal year 2019-20 budget without this carryover. Update Exhibits 1 through 6 as needed to reflect this change.
I did not support this, but I will second it for the purposes of discussion and keep it open for public testimony. Are there any other amendments that we have missed? Very good, without, with those on the table, then, let's go ahead and open this up to public testimony.
We have two people signed up.
Very good.
Charles "Bridge Crane" Johnson and Maggie.
Good morning again, councilors. Charles "Bridge Crane" Johnson, and I hope that you may realize on the fence about the reallocation of the carrying forward of the $50,000 for position two's seat, Commissioner Hardesty, to do what all of you, I hope, are committed to, and that's the maximum engagement with your constituents, to help constituents maximize their power, so we can help the city get through the tragic homeless crisis and make sure that we all learn to equally and effectively respect the human rights of our neighbors. The budget's huge, complicated. I think the soundbite takeaway on funding for homelessness and homelessness, I think you were quoted, about a $33 million project, or that goes through that process. You know, at different times, different good things have happened. Recently, the county, I think, directly got funded $2 million for the Diane Wade House, but they've been able to make it work with Onisha, the director there, and they let her go, and I think that indicates that as a city through the joint office, we need to really redouble on employing real, lived experience people who can work with people who've experienced homelessness, or imprisonment, or both, and not have, just maintain employment of less-connected people. You know, the fact that I caught you off-guard with what George Devendorf has done in his 29-hour change, that's not in the supplemental budget, but it really, I hope, will raise questions about, are you even getting respected by the people that you're paying? Are they engaging with you about the work they're supposedly contracted to do? So, again, on the supplemental budget, the only issue is, I think, that if, during the transition from Commissioner Saltzman to Commissioner Hardesty, not all the funds got expended for constituent engagement, I hope those will be carried forward by the, by your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
I just want to say that I agree with Charles-
Could you put your, could you put your name on the record?
Oh, Maggie. Maggie, Portland Homeless Town Hall, I want to agree with Charles about the way that the county allows people to come forward and communicate their concerns about what's going on in the community and the difference between the way the city does it, which actually blocks civic engagement from happening at, you know, in a real-time basis where, where people can address issues as they're happening, rather than waiting five months. Talking about the budget, I think we need housing for, that is- Talking about the budget, I think we need housing for, that is, had input by disabled people of all different types to engineer the physical structures and to engineer the programs so that they're accessible and usable by people with disabilities. And what often happens, as with the Joint Office of Homeless Services, is they don't take into account that when you take able-bodied people to design a system for disabled people is, they, they don't understand disabled people. And so, they design a lousy building and a lousy program. And, and if there's more civic engagement and more input, but it, it just doesn't even seem that they even want that. They, they just don't even seem to care about that. It's, it's, I know what's good for you, and here I'm handing you this. It's, it's that moral pablum of, I know what's good for you, when in fact, they don't. So, I would, it's not about the budget, it's about how you use the money. And I think you need more input from the types of people who are going to be housed in supportive housing, in, in any kind of, you know, physical structure you make or a program. You know, in the Bouchon Building, you're going to be, you know, shunting off some peer coordinator who you're going to pay off into a corner office where they're just going to offer resources, but they're not going to offer input into how you're designing and making programs that, you know, people will either not be able to use very well.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Very good. Jessica, why don't you come back, Director, interim Director Kennard? And if there are, are there any further discussions on Amendment 1, the technical amendments to Sections 1 through 3? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Hardesty?
I am, I know that all of us are going to have to make some real tough budget decisions because we're in a state of crisis still in this community. And I am very mindful that my bureaus, like all the other bureaus, will have to give up some resources. And so, to that end, to ensure that next week, when we get into the details about the upcoming budget, that we all stay open to opportunities to partner and make our city better, I will vote aye on this amendment.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Did you skip Fish?
No.
He did. I vote aye. The amendment's adopted.
So, this is, this, Mayor, we just voted on your technical?
Technical, 1 through 3. Exhibits, the substitutes for Exhibits 1 through 3. Next is Fritz.
Okay. But you had the same, I thought that was the speech.
I thought that was the one.
Well, all you have to do is now cut and paste. You put your speech in, but, so.
Still a good speech.
Like that. That's funny.
Please call the roll on Fritz. Fritz, one.
Fish?
Aye.
Hardesty?
What I just said, an aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment's adopted. Commissioner Hardesty's amendment. Please call the roll.
Fish?
This is a close call for me. I know the mayor has not recommended that we fund this. I had a brief chance to talk to Commissioner Hardesty this morning. I know the Budget Office has a view. I, I, I tell you where I'm going to come down and why. I cannot support the amendment. And the reason is, we are given a pretty generous allocation every year that we have the right to allocate however we want. It's about $1 million, I think, per office, and we use that money for staff salaries. We do it for meals when we host people. We can use the money for community outreach, and I applaud Commissioner Hardesty for the community outreach she's doing on her own initiative. But we're given a budget, and I think when there is money set aside like this, which is because of underspending by a prior commissioner, I think, really, by protocol, it needs to drop to the general fund. And if there is a request at some point in the future for an additional flexible fund to do community outreach work, I'd be interested in having that conversation. I can't support this in its current form. No.
Hardesty?
To me, it's, one of the vital roles I play here on the City Council is engaging community members and assisting them in understanding how our government works. It is clear to me that most people have no clue how our government operates and how we make the decisions that we make. I would be, I will be disappointed if this particular measure, amendment fails, and if it does, I will live with it. But I hope it sends a very strong message that I'm committed to engaging the community at a much deeper level, and I would hope to have the support of my colleagues in making that happen. I vote aye.
Fritz?
I've been very committed to community engagement over the 10-plus years that I've been here, and I think it's very important that we do that within existing resources. No.
Wheeler?
I'd also like to just point out, there is an additional $75,000 of carryover that we are allocating to Commissioner Hardesty's office for the same reason I vote no. The amendment fails.
Mayor?
Commissioner Fish?
Are we, I forget, are we taking a vote on this today?
We are. It's an emergency ordinance.
Before we take the vote, can I just make an observation?
You may.
This supplemental budget process that we have is, of all the things that are mysterious to people, Commissioner Hardesty, this is probably one of the most mysterious. It even has a title, a bump, that I think is hard for people to understand. A lot of work goes into this. While it appears to be relatively straightforward, an enormous amount of work goes into preparing a supplemental budget, just the carryovers and the compensation set aside and the various things. Our interim director has been in our offices briefing us and providing resources. She has been spending a lot of time helping me understand things. Before we take the vote, I just want to thank interim Director Kennard and her staff for the excellent service that they've given to council once again through the budget process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, please, are there any further discussions on the ordinances amended? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Hardesty votes aye, but Hardesty also wants to say that I, Hardesty votes aye, and Hardesty looks forward to a very detailed conversation starting next week as we get into the new budget. It is important to me that the public understands the decisions that we make and that they are equal partners in participating in that effort. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Echo Commissioner Fish's thanks to the Budget Office, echo Commissioner Hardesty's commitment to community engagement. Thank you, Mayor, for leading this process. Aye.
Wheeler?
Thank you. Again, to your entire team, and I'd like to thank Kristin Dennis, Chief of Staff, as well as Andrea Valderrama, who has worked very tirelessly to help us understand all the nuances of the budget, as well as the spring bump. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, is amended. Thank you. Next item, please, we will move to the first item on the regular agenda, please, item number 406.
Establish parameters of cooperation between Portland Police Bureau and the Federal Bureau of Investigations Joint Terrorism Task Force.
Colleagues, earlier this year, the council voted to withdraw the Portland Police Bureau from the FBI's Joint Terrorism Task Force. Though it was not a unanimous decision, I thought the conversation that it spurred amongst the five of us in public about what public safety in our city should look like was a valuable conversation. The resolution authorizing PBB's withdrawal called for a second resolution to be developed in consultation with the mayor's office and with the Portland Police Bureau outlining the parameters of Portland Police Bureau's future engagement with the FBI's Joint Terrorism Task Force. Through that process, the majority asked that I work with Commissioner Hardesty and her office. After weeks of collaboration and negotiation, Commissioner Hardesty and I offer, in partnership, that second resolution. I've seen and heard criticisms that this resolution maintains PBB's status in the Joint Terrorism Task Force. I want to be clear, that is not the case. Per the February resolution, PBB is no longer a member of the task force, which means that any work conducted will be on a case-by-case basis at the request of the FBI's special agent in charge and with the approval of our chief or deputy chief as the liaison in this particular capacity. Specifically, withdrawal means that PBB will no longer have officers assigned to work at the FBI office alongside other task force officers from other agencies. PBB will not be part of the day-to-day operations of the Joint Terrorism Task Force. PBB will not have immediate access to FBI information related to the Joint Terrorism Task Force. The intent of the first resolution was not to sever our relationship with the FBI, it was to withdraw as a partner agency from the Joint Terrorism Task Force. This current resolution creates parameters within which future collaboration may occur. This resolution is operational and responsive to the realities of PBB's law enforcement work. This resolution is also mindful of those affected within the community and responsive to concerns that were voiced during the process in February. Commissioner Hardesty, I'm pleased to co-sponsor this item with you, and I appreciate the work you and your office put into this, and I invite you to offer your own remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by thanking my office, Bradley, my, I'm sorry, my policy person, Bradley, who spent an incredible amount of time trying to reach consensus on this resolution. I also want to thank Nicole from your office, Mayor, who, they did an incredible job of working together to ensure that there was something that we could support. I want to be clear, I've heard loud and clear from community members their concern about new language around both hate crimes and around criminal activity, which sounds very broad, and I share that concern. But I also want to be very clear that the reason we've asked for annual reports is so that we can track and monitor exactly what Portland Police Bureau is involved in as it relates to the Joint Terrorism Task Force. I believe that we came to the best resolution that we could possibly come to where we would get the most support for it. This is a huge step and a huge win for community members who believe they should not be overly surveilled by the FBI and ICE and other federal agencies, and that we, as a city, must hold people accountable when we say we are a sanctuary city. So, if, in fact, we find out this time next year that what we think we have put in place is not effective, I want to make sure that you know I will be at the forefront of making additional changes as we see fit, based on the report back that we get. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. And I look forward to Portland being the second city in the United States of America to no longer be part of the Joint Terrorism Task Force.
Okay, very good. And Commissioner Fritz would like to move an amendment?
I believe council officers had it previously. I'll read it into the record. This is to amend the seventh paragraph to replace the words "is reasonable suspicion of criminal activity" with "are reasonable grounds to suspect the subject of the information is or may be involved in criminal conduct." So, just for clarity, I'll read the entire paragraph now. Now, for, therefore be it resolved, the chief of police may, on the request of the Portland FBI special agent in charge, temporarily assign PBB officers to work with the Portland FBI JTTF to assist in the investigation of any individual suspected cases of terrorism and/or threats to life, including hate crimes, in or having a direct nexus to the city of Portland, where there are reasonable grounds to suspect the subject of the information is or may be involved in criminal conduct. And?
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Fritz, and a second from Commissioner Fish. And Commissioner Fritz, if I could just ask you a question, it's my understanding this has been reviewed by both the police bureau as well as legal counsel, and it's my understanding that the language that you've changed here at the end is now parallel to state statute. Is that correct?
That is exactly what I should have said, Mayor, and in fact, I think it was your staff and Commissioner Hardesty's that pointed this out. So, I believe this is a consensus amendment, and I appreciate being asked to offer it.
Very good. We'll put that on, that, we'll keep that as an open amendment while we listen to public testimony. Oh, sorry. I seconded it as well.
Thank you. We have 12 people signed up.
Very good.
The first three are Brandon Mayfield, Dan Handelman, and Simab Husani.
Come on up. Three minutes each. Name for the record, please.
Brandon Mayfield, I'm an American Muslim attorney, and first I want to say Salaam Alaykum and give you the greetings of Ramadan, Mubarak, on the third day of Ramadan. I was arrested in connection with the Madrid, Spain bombing in 2004, in part by misconduct on part of the FBI with assistance of the Portland JTTF. And since that time, for over 15 years, and I like that round number, 15 years, I've been campaigning for Portland to get out of the JTTF with some mixed success, back and forth. And since Portland chose to get back in the JTTF, I've been part of a coalition of 49 members and organizations, including myself, and we were, we were hoping we could have 50, because, again, I like round numbers. And we weren't able to get that 50, but then I realized, when you voted on this resolution by majority to get out of the JTTF, I realized that City Council is the 50th member. So, I'm primarily here to say thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for your push, Commissioner Fritz, because I know you've supported our efforts to get out consistently over these years, and I'm very pleased and, you know, proud that we are and have voted to get out of the JTTF. And I also want to say thank you, Mayor Wheeler, to you, to your staff, Nicole Grant, Ken Bradley, Derek, your staff, Commissioner Fritz, you daily. I see Nick, Commissioner Fish has stepped out, but you guys don't often, you do get thanks and praise, but it's very rare. And so, this was a, I can tell by the resolution language that it was a concerted effort. It is well thought out, it's well crafted, it's, there is compromise in the resolution. I'm glad that we have individuized suspicion now through this amendment. My, my only concern, and I'll let Dan and Simab address this, but I would just ask that you might reconsider that in that paragraph that conditions the involvement in the JTTF for investigations of terrorism, the wording now is "and/or threats to life," and, including hate crimes. And we all understand and realize that white supremacy, white nationalism is on the rise, and so, we all support and efforts that work to counter that. However, I have some concerns, our coalition has some concerns, that by including this language "and/or," it doesn't focus just on terrorism, and then it expands the mission and therefore, there's mission creep. But, again, I'm primarily here to say thank you, all of you, for the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Hardesty, Commissioner Fritz. I'm Dan Handelman. I've been a member of Peace and Justice Works and Portland Cop Watch for 27 years, since its founding. Our group's combined mailing list reached roughly 2,000 people. We coordinated the campaign demanding the two part-time officers pull out of the Joint Terrorism Task Force with support from Fortigate, other organizations, and Brandon, a victim of FBI misconduct. We thanked the council for incorporating most of the concept from the campaign's April 17 letter, which was signed by 20 groups and Mr. Mayfield. The resolution requires annual reports and a Bureau directive that has to comport with the terms resolution. However, the document you're considering today does not sufficiently limit the ways in which the PBB can get involved with FBI terrorism investigations, as defined by federal law and the JTTF's mission statement, as we asked. In meeting with Nicole Grant from the mayor's office, we raised the concern that the current language allowing investigations for terrorism and/or threats to life, including hate crimes, is too broad, as Brandon said. Ms. Grant said the JTTF now investigates hate crimes and school shootings, neither of which are necessarily terrorist acts. This represents mission creep by the Terrorism Task Force. If such a policy change occurred, we're not sure the city's previous cooperation was consistent with the 2015 resolution allowing officers to work with the JTTF. with the 2015 resolution allowing officers to work with the J T T F. We also pointed out there are many threats to life and hate crimes committed in Portland each year, and thus the officers who previously worked on a handful of cases would be working on dozens or hundreds of cases. Ms. Grant stated that was all right, since each one has to be approved by the chief. However, the people who wrote to you and came into these chambers demanding withdrawal from the J T T F did not expect the P P B involvement to increase after the act of withdrawing. That's an absurd end run around the original resolution. We also raised the concern that there are no elected representatives approving officers' engagement in these investigations, which is one reason the city pulled out in 2005 and this year, lack of oversight by the police commissioner. Perhaps the greatest question is why it would be necessary to leverage the resources of the FBI, ICE, and other federal agencies, as well as the state police and other local jurisdictions to investigate threats to life, including hate crimes. Ms. Grant did not have a meaningful answer to that question. Finally, I started out by talking about our group's history and breadth of support, because Ms. Grant, with no objections from other staff members at our meeting, stated that people who come to City Council do not represent the community. I find this to be disrespectful and insulting. Is this true of the Japanese-American Citizen League, Unite Oregon, and the A C L U who are also at the meeting, not to mention the League of Women Voters and dozens of other groups who represent thousands of people in Portland metro area who support the withdrawal? Many of these groups come from and/or work with the people who are going to be directly affected by the FBI's ham-fisted ways of conducting investigations based in part on people's religious, ethnic, and political affiliations and dragging the Portland police into the mud with them. Our voices matter. People who show up at City Council don't necessarily do it because they have time to do so, as was insinuated. Sometimes we have to rearrange our work schedules to be here. We expect better from council staff, we expect more from this resolution, and we do not want to have to be back here after malfeasance has occurred saying we told you so. Please amend this resolution before you pass it.
Good morning.
Good morning. Greetings, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. My name is Simab Husani. I am a community organizer with Unite Oregon and the Vice Chair to the Oregon's Chapter for the Council on American Islamic Relations. Unite Oregon represents over 13,000 active members throughout the state. The Oregon Chapter for the Council on American Islamic Relations represents all Muslims, over 50,000 of us in the state of Oregon, as far as making sure we have protections for civil liberties and civil rights. And this is the addition to our broad coalition with withdrawing J T T F. Very grateful for the amount of attention that our Commissioners have given, including yourself, Mayor Wheeler. I respect your dissenting argument from the day of the vote, but, you know, there's a heavy disagreement over there. My opening doesn't completely define me. Being a husband, father, and most of all, a Muslim, does. That bit sounds a bit romantic, but it's more of a likeness to the identity of being human as anyone else in this room and beyond. My Muslim identity is not something that gives me blanken understandings over the Muslim communities. It's the work. And as of the last few years, I've lived the work on a daily basis. Current day, why I'm not happy about this resolution completely sitting before us, the non-starter is described and defined by the mayor's office yesterday. The narrow definition of J T T F's function in cases as it relates to terrorism. Joint Terrorism Task Force by name is given based on the abilities to work, but it works broadly on the outside of terrorism-related framework. After delivering testimonies before you repeatedly on real-life victims such as Brandon Mayfield that's sitting next to us, Millie Hobes, a South Portland community is recovering from losing their Imam. They've lost this Imam because of FBI, J T T F, and DOJ harassment. They didn't like the Imam, Sheikh Mohammed, so for over a decade, they tried to infiltrate the mosque with undercover agents, informants, and false testimonies to drum up some kind of charges, hopelessly. Over a decade, he was kept on a no-fly list, hobbling his duties as a respected Imam, a son, husband, and father. Ultimately, he got off the no-fly list. How? Well, the DOJ offered him removal as long as he rescinds his citizenship and leaves the country back to Somalia. He left on May 1st. If I can just have 30 seconds?
Go ahead.
So what's the impression in this community? I spoke to children yesterday during Eftar, Breaking Fast. Middle and high schoolers distrust. Who do they distrust? Law enforcement. I wonder why now. We packed this courtroom for the day of the vote, we gave you professional testimonies from a former FBI agent and prominent civil rights attorney, over 30 testimonies from community members in support of breaking free from a corrupt, intrusive task force. I didn't see any opposition.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, because we've got a lot of other people.
Please don't get me wrong in my stance here, we're grateful for how much we've gained here, including individualized suspicion and annual reporting, but you've decided to put a backdoor in this resolution for some reason with the expansion of the definition of terrorism. That being said, we'll continue to watch, we'll continue to inform our community, and we'll come back harder if we have to. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Commissioner Fritz has a question.
I'd like to thank all three of you for your diligence over many, many years, and particularly Mr. Mayfield, thank you for coming to say that you appreciate this compromises, and I think that's a very good word for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three, please, Carla.
Are Jep King, Carol Landsman, and Emery Mort.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jep King, Co-Chair of the Racial Justice Working Group of the Portland Democratic Socialists of America. Our organization has about 1,200 Portlanders, including immigrants, people of color, and LGBTQ+ community members. We would like to thank Commissioners Hardesty, Fritz, and you daily for their votes to withdraw from the Joint Terrorism Task Force, but we are concerned that the resolution being considered today does not live up to that commitment. The resolution still allows the police chief to assign officers to the J T T F and expands the scope of investigation to include threats to life. Portland D S A calls on Commissioners to restrict participation in the J T T F by at least amending the proposed resolution to change from terrorism and/or threats to life to terrorism and threats to life, so that threats to life alone are not enough to call in the J T T F. Threats to life is a broad phrase that would be misused, could be misused, for cooperation to target protesters. The A C L U has argued against a similar phrase, acts dangerous to human life, in the Patriot Act, since it could be used to classify acts to civil disobedience as domestic terrorism. Also, we should restrict the city's cooperation with the J T T F because of the racist biases of J T T F agencies. The FBI invented the category of black identity extremist to target black protesters, and it shows bias against Muslim immigrants. This city has a painful history of racism. In 1942, the Portland City Council passed a resolution urging the federal government to proceed with the mass internment of Japanese-Americans. Today, ICE and DHS are building new internment camps. As of last October, there were over 12,000 children from Latin America caged up in federal detention. Our own city houses an ICE facility and at least two detention facilities for immigrant children that we know of. So when the city gives resources to the J T T F, it continues its history of supporting racist imprisonment. City of Portland did the right thing by voting to withdraw from J T T F, but by supporting this solution that broadens the scope of our participation in the task force, the Portland City Council risks repeating its contribution to racist crimes against human rights. Thank you.
Good morning.
Hi. Hi, I'm Carol Landsman, and I'm here representing Jewish Voice for Peace Portland. We're a national organization with over 60 local chapters. The Portland chapter, and this is just a guess, has about 200 members, although they don't all show up for meetings. Anyhow, not only in our task is to fight Islamophobia and, of course, antisemitism, as well as hoping for equal rights for everybody in Israel-Palestine. I'm very concerned about any interaction with J T T F. It's an Islamic-phobic organization. While according to the Southern Poverty Law Center, over 70% of terrorist acts in this country are fomented by white nationalists, J T T F only focuses 20% of its energy, or a rest of the, 20% of their time goes to fighting white nationalists. It's not a good organization. And I understand that some people say, well, look at what's happening. There've been two attacks recently on Jewish synagogues, very upsetting, but in Pittsburgh, for example, Pittsburgh is a member of J T T F, and what did it do to stop the killings of numbers of Jews at the Tree of Life synagogue? I think that sometimes we should, of course, work with them, but I think we need to keep it as narrow as possible. This J T T F is not a panacea, and I want to thank you for getting us out of it, but now I think the language needs to be more restrictive. We can't afford to work hand-in-hand often with an organization that's Islamophobic. Thank you. Oh, and am I thank you? That was wonderful what you guys did. Yay.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Greetings and good morning to everyone here and watching. I want to honor this council.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Emery Mort. I take part in various types of organizing in the city, and during this campaign, I was a representative to the campaign from Portland's Resistance. I want to honor this council for the 3 to 2 vote to withdraw P P B from the J T T F and for adopting language in the resolution that responded to most of the requests of experts and organized groups in the Portland area. Well done, everybody. I've heard the mayor and Commissioner Hardesty, and I respect your words. I followed this event closely. I was in attendance for both lengthy city hall sessions back in February. I've been an active participant and learner within the community campaign to win this result, and I follow these issues very closely in the local, national, and international press. I'm open to listening to all arguments, and I've heard many of them. There's precious little opportunity for our nation to discuss a lot of these topics, so the disagreements that we have and the troubles that we have are not all the fault of local municipalities. In general, I am echoing the testimony of Mr. Handelman, Mr. Husani, and Mr. Mayfield, who began, and my friends here. The main point I came here to speak to today is the language in the proposed resolution that says the FBI Special Agent in Charge can make a request, the Chief of Police, to have P P B officers work with J T T F agents on not just terrorism cases, but also cases involving threats to human life and hate crimes that involve no terrorism based upon how we define terrorism. As others have said, this seems to be literal mission creep. I've gotten word that some arguments for this agreement are that it reflects the J T T F is already, it reflects that the J T T F is already working on incidents like this, say, school shootings, and that when they make a request to the chief, we can trust whoever the chief is with these calls. Basically, this seems to mean that the mission creep has already happened, so we're going to put it into code, which I understand. It also seems to say that this codification will be done to counteract the restrictions of the decision to withdraw P P B from J T T F. Then it says, trust us to make the right calls. There are legitimate reasons to question these arguments, many of which have been said One of which is the reports. So even with the agreement with the city on the line, the local J T T F agents, when requested to submit reports on their activities, turned in reports at the last minute that were described as absolutely inadequate. It would have been preferable to receive adequate reports and transparency before codifying this broad language, which there may be arguments for, but which are a concession. So I hope it will be a matter of record. It is not out of rigid ideology that I and we make these requests. It is based on evidence we have seen, and it's based on concern for people, especially Muslims who without us are silenced by the stature and claims of these law enforcement agencies. Thank you, and congratulations for that which is a very, for that which is very positive about this whole effort and outcome.
Next three, please.
Are Harvey Thorstad, Joe Walsh, and Lightning Super A I Humanity.
Yes, my name is Lightning, I represent Lightning Super Humanity. I think the withdrawal was more symbolic than anything else, and I think the parameters of cooperation should have been put into place before the withdrawal. And again, at the meeting on the withdrawal, as you know, I was pretty much the only one that said we should not withdraw. But to explain myself is that I think Police Chief Outlaw, in my opinion, has the most experience dealing with terrorism on this issue. And from my position, I value what she wants to do, what she says. That's why, Mayor Wheeler, you put her in position as the police chief. And if she says I want a little bit more room to maybe work with J T T F, and I want a little more room to maybe try to do certain things, to go against her is, in my opinion, is foolishness, unless you have that experience and that background and that knowledge and really understand it. And so from my position, I think the Commissioners and the mayor, you have too much authority to override the decisions of the police chief, and I never liked that. I almost came back and I wanted to repeal the decision, but I can see I don't have to do that, because this resolution is going to move it right in the direction, pretty much going to be the same. It's going to fall under certain parameters, very broad range, but it was symbolic to withdraw it. Sounds good, looks good, but what do you have? You're in, you're out, you're in, you're out. Let's follow the parameters, it's a very broad range. We know where this is going. But again, and I understand that, and I see it, and I'm not going to be fooled by it. But my position is, I go by what Police Chief Outlaw wants to do on this. At the end of the day, if something really goes wrong in this city, I'm going to point at her, and she's going to look back, and you are correct, that is my job, and this is what I needed to do, to do my job properly. But with all this game-playing against the police chief, she might very well say, I've been very limited in what I can do now. They have limited me. And I don't think that's right. I think the police chief should have more of a say on this. I think the police chief should override the city's attorney authority on this. For a city attorney to override the police chief on the issue of terrorism is appalling to me. What does the city attorney know about terrorism? I'm going to go over her background extensively to understand that. If she can override the police chief, foolishness, just like this resolution, just like the withdrawal, symbolic foolishness. I go by what the police chief says, and I will stand alongside of her on this issue at the end of the day. Will you, Police Commissioner? We'll find out.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor Wheeler, Members of the City Council. I'm Dr. Harvey Thorstad, Commander, U.S. Navy Reserve, retired, Vietnam Vet. I was an advisor in Vietnam for a year, past president of Veterans for Peace, Chapter 72, here in Portland. I speak for Veterans for Peace. We've been opposed to J T T F since its inception. Veterans for Peace is an international organization based primarily in this country. We also have chapters in Mexico, Japan, Okinawa, Ireland, Britain. War itself is terrorism. I'm reminded when, one night, I was in Vietnam, Saigon, and there was a B-52 bomb dropped, probably A B-52 drop makes a thunderstorm and an earthquake in one seem minor. It's terrorizing. Some of the Vietnamese just shivered in terror. Just, we use more damaging weapons than individuals with limited budgets may do. JTTF is divisive. It puts agents in organizations such as ours and by their existence. If one of our members starts advocating something a little out of line, why, we kind of wonder if it's an agent trying to provoke us and damage our reputation by leading us in ways we shouldn't go. In summary, we greatly applaud your withdrawal from the JTTF, and we strongly support any move in this resolution that will minimize further cooperation with them. Thank you.
Thanks for being here today.
Dr. Thorstad, thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you for your service.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. I also applaud you getting out of JTTF, but apparently we're not out. You ran out of the bed that you were in with JTTF, but there was a rubber band around you. You're being pulled back. You're being pulled back with all the wearis that is associated with this. The problem is, you have to look at the people you're dealing with. And who are you dealing with? You're dealing with a president who is crazy. There is no other word that fits it really well. He's crazy. You are dealing with an Attorney General who has either been convicted of contempt or the Congress is in the process of doing that right now. He is a criminal. That's who you're in bed with. And the rest of the FBI and the other parts of the Department of Justice are silent. They're not saying anything. Rosenstein not saying a word. That's who you're in bed with. You crawled into bed with worse people than you crawled out of. That's what we worry about. We trust Commissioner Hardesty. And don't tell anybody, but we also trust Commissioner Fritz. We don't trust anybody else on this council, nobody. And we don't trust the politicians in D.C. We don't trust the JTTF. We don't trust the Department of Justice, because you can make all the rules you want. But if you don't have people of goodwill, you will have corruption, and we have corruption at the top, and you want to go back to bed with it. What could go wrong with that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carla, next three, please.
The last three who signed up are Charles Bridge Crane, Maggie, and Jim Kennedy.
I'm sorry. And Commissioner Hardesty has a question.
I just wanted to make a statement and do some clarification. I just want to be clear that Chief Outlaw was involved in reviewing the resolution. So we're not doing something to Chief Outlaw. This is something that she's been involved in. And again, this is really about pulling us out. This is not about engaging more with the Joint Terrorism Task Force. When the FBI came and did the public testimony, you might remember that they did not actually have any information on hate crimes. So I don't anticipate them calling for our assistance, because that's not something that they're doing today.
And if I might just add as well, we work, Commissioner Hardesty and I, when we're having conversations, we were concerned about the deadlines in the original resolution to withdraw. And it turned out that Mayor Wheeler and Chief Outlaw had already taken the officers off of the task force, and were not participating on a weekly basis. So we are out.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jim Kennedy with Portland JACL. Assalamualaikum. I want to echo the voices already testified about the thank you for your efforts and the thank you as well on the efforts of the resolution. I understand that you've taken a lot of input from the community, and I appreciate that as well. Having said that, we do have concerns about the expanded scope of mission, and but I would say that, to me, transparency has been the primary issue with our partnership with the JTTF. And I see this as an effort to try to redefine the relationship with the JTTF on the city's terms rather than the FBI's terms. And I would hope that transparency is a primary concern of the commissioners and the chief of police moving forward. And so I look forward to the report. I think the content of the report, the thoroughness and the transparency in the report will dictate whether or not this is a model that other cities can follow in the future. And with that, expressing my concern about the mission creep, I do want to thank you for your efforts and to get us out of this partnership with the JTTF. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Okay. I'm Maggie from Portland Homeless Town Hall. I'm against it because I see this over surveillance going on everywhere. We have profiling of people who ride the MAX just for the sake of profiling. Just give someone a ticket for the sake of profiling them, just so you can find out who they are. You know, what do Donald Trump and the NRA have in common? Both love Russian financing. Both have a lot of white supremacists in their organization whom they openly admire. The JTTF loves the NRA and Donald Trump because they are job security. Now, I would like to talk about a couple of sheros. Jacinda Ardern, President of New Zealand, banned assault weapons in one week when they had a terrorist attack. This is how you need to deal with, we don't need more arms and more surveillance. We need to ban assault weapons, and we need to strip the NRA of their nonprofit status as Leticia, Leticia James, I'm sorry for pronouncing your name wrong, of the new AG of New York. I mean, what a brilliant, intelligent woman, you know, and to finally come to that conclusion that we've got to strip them of their nonprofit status. And Ilhan Omar, you know, she criticized our public policy regarding Israel and perhaps others who criticize Palestine, Jews for Peace. We need to get guns out of, you know, assault weapons out of the hands. You know, we don't do anything. And this is how it needs to be done, and that's what Jacinda Ardern and Leticia James are doing, something very logical, rather than over surveilling and profiling people if they speak out against, say, Israel or Palestine, US public policy. So, you know, people, you know, you've got private security taking pictures of people holding signs against US policy and bringing that to them. You know, what's that all about? No.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Assalamualaikum war arghmatullah and shalomualaikum. Religious minority communities are under attack. Even Christians, black Christians in America, are having their churches burnt down. I'm Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, and we need to look at what we're doing here, this good collaboration we've had between 49 or 50 grassroots groups, and prepare so that in 2020, when we hopefully have regime change, we can replace the JTTF with an organization that actually focuses on gun violence and mass shootings. So, you know, there are little nuancey things that are hard to pin down what they really mean, whether we are coming into consistency with Oregon state statutes, or whether we're cracking open a door for not good work that will be done by the most questionable employees of either the police department or the FBI. But unfortunately, what, even though this is a positive step and hopefully leads a national trend, we need you elected commissioners to consider the work that these 49 grassroots groups and constituents have done and the model that it represents. We have told you what we need you to work with us on for community safety, and we need you to amplify our voices so that we can talk to Lauren Rancannon, George Chamberlain, Stephen Palmer, even Steve A. Goldman, about what their job really is. Their job is not to listen to the corrupt, top-down crap coming from the Attorney General of the United States. Their job as FBI Special Agent in Charge and Assistant Special Agent in Charge are to find out what community safety means to the people in Portland and how we're going to implement that, how we're going to make sure that we remain, I think we've only had one metro area situation with a student discharged. I can't even remember if anyone was killed. But we need the FBI to not be profiling activists, people doing peaceful civil disobedience. And if you get any reports at all from the police department or the Federal Bureau of Investigation, you need to make it clear right now so that the information will be there about what information they have, about what they've done to interdict acts of violence by white supremacists, how they are making sure that communities of color in the city are safe, how the FBI's nationwide diversity improvement program is going to include people that can connect with those communities, not infiltrate them. So please, as you pass this resolution, remember it's just a step on your duty as people that have been chosen by your constituents to work with us on our vision for community safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who testified. And that completes the testimony. Carla?
That's all who signed up.
Very good. Can we get Sergeant Pete Simpson and Nicole Grant to come up and answer any potential questions anybody has about the underlying resolution or the amendment that's on the Well, this is the easiest grilling you're ever going to get. With that, we'll call the roll then on the amendment.
Fish?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
All right. The amendment's adopted. To the main motion, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Thank you, Carla. Colleagues, during my 10 years of service on this council, I have voted on our participation in the JTTF on three occasions. And I've seen many examples of our community's successful participation in the JTTF. In February, I voted to remain in the JTTF. I believe that we have better outcomes with our federal partners when we work together rather than working in silos. We see that in our bureaus and among our council offices. There is great value in collaboration. By participating in the JTTF, we also bring Portland values to the table. Our local law enforcement officers have a lot to offer: experience, an understanding of state and local law, and importantly, relationships in our community. And finally, and most importantly, I believe we continue to be safer when we have a relationship and share information with the FBI. Other progressive cities such as Seattle, Boston, Denver, Oakland, and New York have formed partnerships between their police bureaus and the FBI without sacrificing civil liberties. I believe we can do the same. That said, a majority of the council disagrees with the mayor and me on this important issue. Therefore, I believe the resolution before us today is a thoughtful alternative. It will allow the city to continue working with the FBI on an as-needed basis. It requires detailed annual reports, something that has been and remains very important to me. And our police chief or deputy chief will serve as the liaison to the JTTF. I want to thank the mayor for his leadership and Commissioner Hardesty for her collaboration in the development of this resolution. I know that their two offices, especially Nicole Grant and Derek Bradley, worked tirelessly on this, and I am pleased with this compromise. I vote aye.
Hardesty?
I also want to start by thanking my staff, Doug Bradley, and Nicole for the hard work they did in trying to get to a consensus. I want to be very clear, though, as I make this vote. When the FBI came and met and supposedly gave reports while we were part of the Joint Terrorism Task Force, they were insin, they were, they were missing real data. They were, they didn't tell us anything about their day-to-day activities or how Portland police officers were being engaged. I in no way will accept a report from Portland Police Bureau, who we actually do have control over, since the mayor is the police commissioner, and we, as other commissioners, have the opportunity to weigh in on that leadership. I have no intentions of accepting a meaningless report. This is a compromise. In a compromise, nobody gets everything they want. But I will be here next year when that first report comes in, and I can assure you that if it is inadequate to address the concerns and the safety needs of community members, I will be the first one leading the charge to make changes. I ran on this issue because of the fear that I experienced in every corner of the city and how Portland police engage with federal agencies. That fear has not gone away. In fact, that fear has been exacerbated by white supremacist activity that appears to be unabated in our community. We have a lot of work to do to make sure that everybody, regardless of race, gender, where they were born, what language they speak, feel like Portland is a place that they can thrive. I vote aye on this, on this resolution, and look forward to the next year of monitoring the implementation to ensure that we're not doing mission creep as we have in so many other areas. I vote aye.
Fritz?
I'm very happy with where we are today. It took a lot of work to get to this point, and I think the work was well done and well worthwhile. Thank you to the 12 people who spoke today and for others who are here to observe this occasion. It is a momentous occasion. I've lost track of the number of times we've had JTTF discussions over the last 10-plus years. And as Commissioner Hardesty said, I'll be here for another one next year when the next report comes. And I'm confident that with Nicole Grant's guidance, the police report will have the information that's been negotiated and put into this resolution. So thank you for that. And thank you, Nicole, for your ongoing service to several mayors and several city councils and your partnership and your expertise in knowing the ins and outs of how the police operate. So I really appreciate that. Thank you, Cynthia Castro, on my staff, and also my chief of staff, Tim Creel, and the mayor's chief of staff, Kristin Dennis. Thank you to Commissioner Hardesty for your leadership. And thank you, Mayor Wheeler.
Oops.
No, I almost did it, but I didn't quite. Mayor Wheeler, you obviously didn't support the direction of the council a couple of months ago, and yet, as I just noted earlier, you immediately implemented the direction that the council was given. And you and your staff have absolutely put your best efforts into honoring that resolution and also figuring out something that will work, we hope, better than previous iterations. It's not an easy issue, and there aren't any easy answers. And so I anticipate that we will need to continue to monitor and make changes. And I believe that we all have the same goal. We want to protect the people of Portland and everybody in Portland. We want the community to be safe. We want the police chief to have the proper authority. We want Oregon laws to be followed, and we want to catch people who are doing bad things. We want Oregon laws to be followed, and we want to catch people who are doing bad things. So I hope that this is a step forward in those goals. Aye.
Mayor?
Commissioner Fish?
Commissioner Fritz reminded me of my bad form. I'd like to thank Asena Lawrence on my team, who was involved in the council discussions, and my Chief of Staff, Sonia Schmansky, both of whom really did great work on this. Thank you.
Wheeler?
First of all, I want to acknowledge what my colleagues have already said. It would have been my preference that we stay engaged with the Joint Terrorism Task Force. By pulling out, we are no longer involved in the priorities of the task force. We're not involved in the policies related to the task force, and we do not have the opportunity at this point to bring our Portland values to that table. And I want to remind people that the task force continues to operate in our community. It simply operates without our engagement. That being said, this resolution, I think, today answers a number of the concerns that I had, a number of concerns that the police chief had. It was a very well, I believe, crafted compromise on the part of all of the city council offices and their staffs, and I want to thank them for that. Anytime we're talking about public safety, the issue can always be fraught with controversy. They're important issues. They're sometimes very emotional issues, and as was noted during public testimony today, these issues often deal with matters no less significant than life and death. And so I'm heartened by the fact that on this resolution today, it represents a compromise on the part of all members of the city council and their staffs. We've come together in a unified way on this, and I think it shows us a path forward and proof to the community that we can, in fact, work together and collaborate, even if we have very different perspectives about how best to engage in the public safety arena. I want to thank Nicole Grant from my office. Nicole, you've worked very tirelessly on this, and I really appreciate it. Sergeant Pete Simpson from the Portland Police Bureau, you were a man of few words today by necessity. Thank you for the hard work that you have put into this as well. I vote aye, and the resolution is adopted, is amended. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Next item—I'm going to move it—but could you read item 407, please?
Approve funding recommendations made by Children's Levy Allocation Committee—
Okay, thank you.
—for fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
I'm going to move item 407 to tomorrow afternoon, and we have a couple of other items, I believe, that are also going to have to be moved to tomorrow afternoon.
403.
403 from the consent agenda. Those are both emergency items. They will have to be moved till tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Correct. So with that in mind, we will now move to item 408.
Carla, do we have to read 403 to put them over tomorrow, or can you just do that?
We can just carry them over. Okay, so no further actions required to carry them.
Is that on? Is that on? Is that working? I can't hear you. Is your mic on?
Yes, the Justice Center elevators, the fourth, that's item 412-1, that's going to have to be moved or carried over as well till tomorrow afternoon. So that leaves us with 408. This is a second reading.
Sorry. 408, amend Title 33 to update the neighborhood contact regulations.
Any further discussion on this item? This is a second reading. We've already heard discussion and public testimony. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Well, I appreciate the council discussion on this, the public testimony. I believe there are four substantive amendments that we came to consensus on. I'm pleased to vote aye.
Fritz?
Thank you, especially to Sarah Wright, also to Eric Engstrom and Shannon Buno in the Bureau of Planning Sustainability for their diligence in crafting appropriate code language to respond to the amendments before us, which were in direct response to community testimony. And thanks to Sarah for her huge amount of outreach that she did prior to this and for totally exhibiting what a really good planner does, is that even when something isn't the direction that the bureau has chosen, taking my request and crafting a really elegant solution. Thank you to Claire Adamsack and Tim Creel on my staff, and to all the community members who came to two separate hearings to articulate the concerns about what we're gaining but what we might be losing with the current proposal. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for supporting my amendments. I truly appreciate it. Aye.
Wheeler?
This turned out to be a very interesting discussion, and I also appreciated the amendments and the thoughtful dialogue that we had. I'm happy to support it. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, is amended. Next item will be 409, please.
Authorize an agreement with Multnomah County to address youth and gang violence in an amount not to exceed $109,835.
Colleagues, this is a position—it's a City of Portland and Multnomah County collaboration arising out of the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council recommendation. The Portland Police Bureau and Multnomah County split the costs of this particular position. The purpose of the Youth and Gang Violence Coordinator is to implement, monitor, and provide ongoing evaluation of all aspects of the plan under the guidance of the Local Public Safety Coordinating Commission Youth and Gang Subcommittee Steering Committee. Like to see the business cards on that one. The coordinator serves as a liaison for the Multnomah County Juvenile Services Division and the City of Portland Office of Youth Violence Prevention and is responsible to synthesize and analyze information regarding youth and group gang-related violence prevention and intervention program efforts. As recommended by the Comprehensive Gang Model Implementation Plan, the coordinator position will offer sustained enhancement and coordination of multidisciplinary and data-driven strategies across the entire spectrum of prevention to reentry programming resulting in the achievement of better outcomes for youth, their families, and our community. I do not know if we have a formal presentation on this today. Do we have somebody here to present? Come on up. That looks like Robert King. Antoinette Edwards is over there, too. Very good. Good morning. Don't be shy, Antoinette. Come on up.
Mayor, City Council, good morning. My name is Robert King. I'm the Senior Policy Advisor to Mayor Wheeler, and I'd like to take a moment to make introductions. Erica Pruitt, who's the Director of DCJ, is here with us to talk about this matter that is before you. Antoinette Edwards, Director of Youth Violence. I'm sorry—I—
It's okay. Marcia Perez with the Juvenile Services Division.
Marcia Perez is here. Coordinator. Thank you very much, Marcia. Pardon me for not—and just—they're here today just to talk to you a little bit about the position. Obviously, as you've indicated, there's a collaboration there between Multnomah County, the City of Portland, and the Portland Police Bureau. There's been incredibly good work done, and we just want to take a moment to highlight that.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, and good morning, city commissioners. Again, my name is Erica Pruitt, and I'm the Director of the Multnomah County Department of Community Justice. First of all, I want to express my gratitude to Antoinette Edwards and Tom Peavy for their longstanding relationship and collaboration with the Department of Community Justice and for the powerful impact they have had on the community through the Office of Youth Violence Prevention. I also want to thank Chief Daniel Outlaw and the Portland Police Bureau for their partnership in this work. Finally, I want to thank you for your support in funding the Youth and Gang Violence Coordinator. This is an important addition to an already thriving city-county collaboration in the effort to address the devastating impacts of gang activity in our community, which includes but is not limited to gun violence and sex trafficking. We collaborate across a continuum of prevention, intervention, and suppression. It is our goal within DCJ to focus our attention on high-risk gang members to give them the support, services, and resources they need to address criminal thinking and interrupt destructive behavior patterns. We are proud of the collaboration with the city, multiple criminal justice partners, and community partners who participate in the Gang Impact at Family Team, the GIFT program. The program aims is to identify high-risk gang members and to develop strategies and resources aimed to lead them out of a gang lifestyle. Furthermore, the Office of Youth Violence Prevention has provided consistent partnership through the implementation of the—this is a mouthful—Habilitation, Empowerment, and Accountability Therapy Program, HEAT. This is a cognitive behavioral group rooted in cultural practices and civic engagement. We are committed to working together to seek solutions to end the gang activity and gun violence in our communities, and we look forward to continued partnership in building stronger and safer communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Marcia Perez. I'm here before you to support this partnership, obviously because it employs me. I've been with the Department of Community Justice for over seven years in various capacities. Most notable, I worked as a juvenile court counselor, working with the highest-risk youth impacted by gangs, with their families in this community. That work really has driven my ability to see the bigger picture when we're working with at-risk youth in this community. Having been hired recently as the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, which is a very long title on my business card, it has really allowed me to hone in on the strategic plan under the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council to reduce violence in the community as it relates to youth and gangs. My role is necessary in order to effectively monitor the strategic plan and ongoing evaluation of the services provided for these youth. The work that I do includes building and repairing alliances and increasing trust and credibility within vulnerable populations while providing insight and understanding within complicated bureaucratic barriers and bridging gaps to increase hope within an institution full of oppression. I'm also tasked with the oversight of the juvenile department's gang contracts. These contracts have a profound impact on communities of color, and contracts will now have a higher quality assurance by raising the standard of accountability—excuse me—on parties working to increase public safety through positive behavior change. This partnership with Multnomah County Juvenile Services Division and the Office of Youth Violence Prevention has allowed me to serve as a subject matter, expert being able to leverage strong relationships that I've built over time, and establish and develop training opportunities to enhance service provision among juvenile service workers and community outreach workers in the city. Multnomah County is a national leader in juvenile justice reform. I have full confidence that the work that we're doing will not only have an impact on this city, but also cities around the state. Thank you for your time and consideration of this resolution.
Thanks. Appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Good morning, mayor and commissioners. My 8:30 dental appointment is having us aftermath, so I'll be brief. Brief.
Ms. Edwards, could you move the mic in front?
Yeah, we want to hear this.
Brief. I just really feel that we're stronger together, and it's going to take all hands on deck to do this work. There were three homicides, four gang shootings within a week, and we need to work together because this is everyone's opportunity to make a difference. So I thank you. This is a partnership in government and in bureaus, and we're not siloing this. So thank you for recognizing that effort.
Antoinette, you always go beyond the call of duty. The call of duty in today's no exception, coming here after the dentist. So thank you for the great work you do in the community. Commissioner Fritz?
I have a question for our colleagues at the county. I know that we had some discussion about the word "gang" and took it out of Ms. Edwards' title. Has there been a similar discussion at the county about that word? Not that I want you to spend six months discussing a word rather than doing the work, but I just wondered what that conversation has been like.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that over the last few years that we've been involved in the efforts that the city has been involved, we've had people at the table talking about the word using gang violence, gun violence, and so really, we've been in support of the shift to talking about gun violence. But there's still activity and practices that happen in our community that are related to people's involvement with gangs, and so that's why I was intentional in my presentation to talk about gang activity and gun violence.
I noticed that, so thank you for explaining.
Very good. And colleagues, I have a technical amendment that I've been asked to put on the table. This was noticed in the Tuesday memo. It relates to item number six of the ordinance. It says appropriation of $71,083 in the mayor's office of youth violence prevention has been struck, and it now says in the police special revenue fund, fiscal year 1920 budget will fund the remainder through June 30, 2020. So the whole amendment, appropriation of $71,083 in the police special revenue fund fiscal year 1920 budget will fund the remainder through June 30, 2020. Can I get a second on the technical amendment, please?
Sir, take.
We have a second. We'll keep that open for public comment. Thank you all for your great work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, we have three people signed up.
Very good.
Maggie, Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, and Janay Connet. G. Ann, sorry.
You're new. You got to start first. Congratulations.
Good morning, man. I hate wearing that hat. I love my dad very much, but I really don't like that sometimes. So yesterday, although I'm not on any of your special councils or anything, I'm over at the MAC station, and so is a person who works for Parks and Recreation. And I said, "It's Tuesday. Where's the Nintendo van?" Because my old Nintendo's as far as I got, guys. So anyway, they said that because of the gang-related incidences last year that went on with Holiday Park's community services, Lloyd Center decided not to pair up with—God, I'm sorry, I'm not on one of your committees, and I'm not important. And the guy said, "Lloyd Center chose not to redo this because of the gang activity at the park." So what you're telling me, Portland, is you're tearing down the bowling alleys, the pool halls. You're making this a town for kids to have nowhere to go and nothing to do. Really sorry I'm not on one of your committees. No, I'm from St. John's, and I care, and I have to care because that's where I grew up. And Mayor Wheeler, thanks to you, I saw somebody sheet dope when I was 56-years-old and walked down to the waterfront the first day I came back. It's all you guys' responsibility. This is what you are supposed to be getting paid for. You're supposed to be getting paid so I don't watch little five-year-old girls walk down the street going like this, holding mama's hand. I shouldn't have had to be before this council, and I shouldn't have to be saying any of this stuff because I'm not getting paid to know. But you guys are. And the one thing I can say about St. John's in Portland, Oregon, when I've been here in my lifetime, we're all about the day and kids. We could care less about all you adults, to be perfectly honest. Anybody who's from Portland, even some of the military guys I know, would agree with that, man. We care what happens to our children. So why aren't you guys aware of this? Why don't you guys pay attention? Why and when does progress not become progress anymore? I see all these buildings going up. I don't see any of the homeless getting— I see a lot of problems, man, and I wish that chick was sitting right there because she says she's from here. Hell, I've been gone for 20 years, man. I'm not any part of this. When I left, you know this stuff wasn't going on. So I would like my city council and my mayor to get their priorities straight in this state. Maggie, I love you, girl.
Maggie, you're up.
I have—
I hope you all have a great day, man. Go home.
Okay, I have to agree that getting your priorities straight is important. I think there's a couple of problems here. One, you've got kids coming up and growing into gang violence, and then you've got the people who are already there. And there's two, I think, interwoven things. One is, how do you show kids how to—you know, the principles of nonviolent communication, de-escalation in the midst of conflict if they're in a society that is used to behaving violently and not using words to deal with conflict? And then there's also the other thing of these people are—these kids are just tossed aside and thrown away. How—it seems like a—$71,000 seems like a paltry amount when you consider what about programs where they can be involved in activities that give them an actual certificate for something like cooking or construction or learning public policy to engage— for something like cooking or construction or learning public policy to engage, civically engage, so they can learn about government, where they get a certificate of participation at the end so that they have something that says they went through this program and have it be a good program and have it, give them actual skills. So you bring in people from life in business, whether it's, you know, construction people or lawyers or nurses or doctors or teachers who are teaching the actual skills that they need to go on to further their education or to get a job, you know, rather than just going through a peer counseling program or where they're counseled by the government, you know, and there's no actual skill at the end.
Commissioner Fritz?
So actually, that's a good suggestion, and we do that. It's called the Summer Works Program. We also have a program to support Parks and Recreation, and it's funded with hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. And I think, first of all, the minor thanks first can go to Ted for clearly talking about item six on the first page of the PDF that we're going to change the funding source for this $71,083. We don't really have time. It's not relevant to get into the whole question of marijuana tax money. We know that communities of color, especially the black community, have been disproportionately affected in the past by the war on drugs. So that's something, you know, for a future conversation with the budget about how that should play out. But mostly, I wanted to thank Commissioner Fritz for inviting the excellent panel to talk about the G-word, "gang." One thing we're learning from incidences of violence in this city, particularly more downtown, when gangs from Washington that are almost exclusively white come around is that youth violence is a problem. We definitely don't want to stigmatize to any particular community. It's great that we have finally gotten our act together and empowered these women with some funding to work, so they can work with people that self-identify as gang members or have having had gang affiliations or ex-gang involvement. But we also know that in our police bureau and in the FBI, we need to look at the other gangs that are white power gangs, white supremacist gangs, and make sure that we, as a society, have some kind of resource so that we're not breeding less. It's more complicated. We know that the Poway synagogue shooter was a church-affiliated, kind of under-the-radar person, but there, when youth are not well-engaged with well-balanced, responsible leaders in society, they're all at risk of being led astray. And for the sake and safety of all our communities, we need to also look at if there's a role for this city to interdict violent white youth that grow up to be violent white adults. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Does that complete public testimony today?
Yes, that's all who signed up.
Very good. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Call the role on the amendment, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thanks to everybody who came today. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment's adopted. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading as amended. Next item, 410, please.
Extend contract with Cascadia Behavioral Health Care, Inc. to June 30, 2022, and increase the not-to-exceed amount to $3,223,577 for mental health clinician services.
Good morning.
Boss, again, Robert Kang, senior advisor to you for public safety. And we're here today with Lieutenant Casey Hepman, who runs the Behavioral Health Unit for the Portland Police Bureau, as well as Barbara Snow from Cascadia Behavioral Health Care. And they want to share information with you about the program in response to the decision that you're going to make today. Turn it over to the lieutenant or Barbara, whoever'd like to go first.
Sure. So yeah, this is Casey Hepman. I'm the lieutenant of the Behavioral Health Unit at the Portland Police Bureau. I'm pleased to be here in front of you guys today. I appreciate your continued support through the years for the initiatives that we've been employing at the police bureau through the Behavioral Health Unit. So this contract will continue the partnership between the Portland Police Bureau's Behavioral Health Unit and Cascadia Behavioral Health. Cascadia provides the clinicians that help compromise the Behavioral Health Response Teams within BHU. The mission of the Behavioral Health Response Teams are to identify individuals having frequent or high-risk contacts with the Portland Police Bureau due to a known or suspected mental illness, and to connect them to community-based mental health resources or services. Each BHRT team consists of a uniformed officer paired with a mental health clinician. They're QMHPs, or Qualified Mental Health Professionals, from Cascadia Behavioral Health. These professional clinicians provide on-scene mental health assessment and evaluation, and provide linkages to community resources. Much of the work involves bringing structure and systems coordination to the lives of individuals in crisis that previously had contact with law enforcement systems. So this proposed, this proposed ordinance will extend our current contract with Cascadia Behavioral Health for three years. The original contract was signed in 2014, and this is the Fifth Amendment. The goal of the BHRT teams, again, is to provide timely follow-up to connect the people that we're working with to appropriate services and resources. And to provide a little bit of history, the BHU was formed in 2013, and last year, in this current fiscal year that's coming to a close, you graciously extended additional funding to the Behavioral Health Unit, which allowed us to expand by two additional teams. So currently, we have five teams, co-responder teams, that are comprised of a police officer and a mental health clinician that are doing this great work here in Portland. I'd like to close by saying that this relationship with the Portland Police Bureau that we have with Cascadia is an extremely important one. This contract is a critical component of the work being done within the BHU and the wider police bureau. The clinicians provided in this contract are an integral part of the Behavioral Health Unit and serve an important role in the Portland Police Bureau's wider, scaled crisis response model. They're the backbone of BHU's co-responder BHRT teams, and we rely on their unique perspectives and expertise as we work with these individuals in mental health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Barbara Snow, Director of Crisis Services at Cascadia Behavioral Health Care. I don't have much to say. I just kind of want to echo what Casey has said about the program. We provide at Cascadia a wide array of crisis services to individuals in the community experiencing a mental health crisis. Our relationship with Portland Police and this particular unit is one of those services that we provide. It's a very valuable piece of the overall crisis services provided for people in the community.
Mayor? Commissioner Fish?
So the only question I have is, I believe you said this was the Fifth Amendment to the contract, so we are, we have been extending this contract with Cascadia Behavioral Health Care. At what point are we obliged to go out with an RFP to redo the contract?
Sure. I don't know the intricacies, unfortunately, of the city procurement. I do believe that we have an allowance to go out to 10 years, and we aren't to that, that limit at this point. And we've found that the, the unique work that's being done within BHU by these clinicians requires a unique skill set, and it would be, I think, detrimental to the program and the strides that we've made in efforts to become substantially compliant with the DOJ settlement agreement, to change midstream at this time, to try to bring on a whole other bevy of clinicians that don't have the crisis work experience where they've partnered with police in the past. So we really rely on that additional history and knowledge from collaborating with the Portland Police over the years.
So I'm not questioning the expenditure, and I'm not questioning the competence of the provider. I am just interested at what point we are obliged to go out with a new RFP, which has the potential to determine whether there are other providers that offer competitive services and also allows us to test the fee schedule. And if you could just let me know, following council, whether June of 2022 is when we would otherwise be expecting to go out on a RFP?
Most definitely. I'll follow up with you on that.
Just a simple email to my chief of staff would be fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot of questions about this. And acknowledging that the work I did with the Bureau of Emergency Communications in my first term from nine to 12 helped establish the Behavioral Health Unit, and particularly the Mobile Response Units, we, I don't think we've ever had a comprehensive report come to council saying, "These are the number of outcomes that we've gotten. These are the number of contacts." My staff, Misong Kwan on my staff, has been asking these questions and hasn't got any answers. The answer I have is that since 2014, a total of 3,630 individuals have been referred to the BHU, and it says 2,500 outcomes. I need to know what were the outcomes? How many people got into services? Even the numbers, 3,630 over four years, that's less than two a day. So I'm, I'm just wondering, particularly, so I'm wondering about what's required in the Department of Justice settlement, because when we settled it, we were thinking this was going to be the appropriate response that would stop. And it was supposed to be four emergency responders, whereas my understanding is that now these units are doing more contact with frequent callers or frequent people that are not the subject of 911 calls. And so now we've got this new concept of the Portland Street Response with, similar to the Kahoots model, and we heard, we're hearing loud and clear from community members that they don't want armed police officers responding to people in mental health crises. So I need a lot more information about this, especially as we're grappling with the budget, looking at, you know, what are we going to do? So could you just respond to any and all, any of those points?
Most definitely. Yeah. So we, the BHU fits into a larger, skilled crisis response model that the bureau operates within, and we do oversee a number of different facets that do address individuals that are in the crisis moment. So as you may or may not know, so all Portland police officers that are working patrol have 40 hours of CIT training, and we augment that with 129 officers that are operational in our ECIT, or Enhanced Crisis Intervention Training Program, ECIT. They are individuals that are overseen by the BHU. We oversee the training and ongoing requirements for their work in the program, and they're the ones that are called upon to respond to crisis events that maybe have different components or more, higher acuity. So, but the BHRTs that I'm referencing that this contract really addresses is more of a follow-up capacity. The BHU teams, the co-responder teams are more of a follow-up capacity. Where we're, you'd like...
Excuse me, I didn't need to interrupt. Why do we need a police officer to be on those trips?
The follow-up?
Yes.
So...
This is not somebody who's in crisis or a threat. Could you want to respond to that?
I would actually argue, there are people that are in crisis, and we're dealing with very complex and multifaceted situations that potentially are at risk to the individual that's in crisis, family members, community members, and the clinicians that go out. So this particular unit does do a number of different strategies and implementations to try to decrease that use of law enforcement overall. And I am very aware of the Kahoots conversation going on in the community, and I'd like to see that conversation be a and conversation inside of an either/or for all of the programs that we're providing currently within the city for those suffering from mental illness.
And I know that I was going to be doing a comprehensive look at how does this all fit together.
Yeah.
I'm just reluctant to authorize $3 million, much as I love Cascadia and the work that you do, and I know it's necessary work. I'm wondering about continuing the Mobile Response Unit program when it's really expensive, especially when we know we have a shortage of police officers.
So this is an interesting point, and can I jump in on this?
Absolutely.
I generally don't like to be a shill for organizations, but Street Roots has a really interesting article today on Project Respond. And Project Respond is supposed to be an effort to engage with people in crisis that does not involve the police
Right.
regularly. Seventy percent of the time, they actually call for police backup. And so what's happening anyway is the police are getting involved. So the bigger question, getting to the and conversation you want to have, is is there a way that we can find feather and more precisely define, is somebody in crisis where we can send a mental health worker, an EMT, like Kahoots, versus somebody who is an imminent danger to themselves or to others, and we need to have a police officer in the background while a mental health professional is engaging and trying to de-escalate the situation? And I'll freely acknowledge, we do not have the right equation today. We don't. And that's why we need to take this broader look.
So potentially, could, could we extend this contract for one year while we're figuring that out? That's just something, I mean, we're not voting on it today anyway, so I think it's a broader discussion.
So I'd like to add one more thing. I'll, I'll give the counterargument as to why no. I'll give a yes and a no, but the no is stronger for me. The yes is, I believe, that the police bureau, first of all, I think this has been a successful model, you know, notwithstanding that I do think better data would be helpful for all of us here. And we want to find a better crisis intervention model. But the main reason I want to continue this contract is because it's a requirement of the DOJ settlement.
Yeah.
And so we need to both get it right, and we need to keep it in place as a requirement of the DOJ settlement.
And that was my first question, so I'd need some more information. If I could, before next week, though, get some information on how many of these contacts result in people getting into services, accepting mental health care services, versus we go, we tell them to, we try to, we try to engage and de-escalate, but we end up going back again the next day? That's, that's what, you know...
We definitely have plenty of statistics and information, and I'm sorry your office hasn't had access to those because...
Yes, if you could get me that before next week, that'd be helpful.
Both through the Close Bureau and Cascadia, we have lots of data.
But knowing that the police commissioner and the Department of Justice Settlement are both firmly in favor of this, that's really compelling to me.
Yeah. You know, data is important. The anecdotal information coming out of this unit is overwhelmingly positive, and I want to thank you for the work that you do. It is very difficult work. It is challenging. And the public, Commissioner Fritz is right, the public is really engaged in this issue right now. And so we, at every step, the more information we can provide, the better. And I think that information actually strengthens the case for this unit. And whatever we decide to do on street response, my suspicion is BHU is going to continue to be a core part of it. I wish it didn't have to be, but that's the reality of what we're seeing on the streets. And you're doing great with the, with the tools and resources you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Why don't we go ahead and, did I put an amendment on the table, a technical amendment for this? I don't...
Yes.
I did. Okay, let's take a vote on the technical amendment, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Amendment is adopted. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves...
Testimony?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot testimony. How could I do that? I'm slipping. In my old age. It's showing.
We have two people signed up, Charles Bridge Crane Johnson and Maggie.
I apologize.
It's all right. Your brain would totally fail.
You know what? I cut back on coffee, and look what's happened. Well, that's supposedly a good thing. It's been a few, Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, and it's probably been a few months since I was on-site at Cascadia Garland, but in this overarching framework, we know that there's at least one incident where Cascadia and a Portland police officer responded to Garland and then taxied a person down to Unity Center. So I don't know where that fits in. I don't think it hit the radar as a Project Respond or not, but I'm really encouraged by Commissioner Fritz's asking about the possibility of funding this for one year. I think you actually would all do better if you did move an amendment to just fund one year, get the data and process it. And that relates to what Commissioner Fish has brought up, is it's like, how long do we go on without an RFP, RFQ, about how we're going to do even better, instead of just stopgap or procedurally refunding what's going on? You know, to make that decision, you'll have to get that data. But I think that really the data that the woman talked about providing to Commissioner Fritz, there needs to be public engagement and stakeholder engagement. You know, we know that the Fire Bureau and stuff, there have been different procedures to deal with frequent callers, but, you know, until we look at the data, data that specifically identifies, anonymizes individual clients, and whether there's, of those 3,000-some incidents, do we have 300 high-use people that are supposedly being retrieved to services, but they're not really getting any traction, they're still living on the street and breaking into houses in southwest Portland? And what are, how does that work? You know, we had a named individual in the public testimony at the beginning of the session, you know, are they not in mental health court or other probation and parole because they have to assent to mental health court or they go into regular court? So, you know, definitely, as the mayor noted, there's been anecdotal wonderful stories. Prior mayor, who's never completely been named as Choo Choo Charlie today, has talked about suicide interventions that have gone well with this team. But I... But I think if you were to modify your vote to only fund it for one year, that wouldn't break your compliance with the DOJ settlement. It would just mean that during the next year, you'll have to be attentive, maybe actually develop RFP, RFQ to get, to tweak the program into something even better. But obviously, you need to fund something today because people are experiencing violence in and near their homes with their children that are related to other people's mental health instability that's leading them to criminal behavior. We need to have funding to arrest those programs without overcrowding our jails. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Maggie Portland, Homeless Town Hall. Okay, first, I want to say your standards for what a good result are, are so low. It just, it's terrible. The only thing I think that's going to help this situation is I've seen models in other states where they house people with mild to severe behavioral health issues based on, you know, their diagnosis, and they have ongoing and continuing state-licensed case management, and they stay stabilized because they are being helped with their medications, they're being helped with their dietary issues, they're being helped with their behavioral health issues on a regular basis. They have regular appointments set up with their case manager. Sometimes it's every day, sometimes it's once a week, sometimes they're doing okay and it's once every two weeks, and then they go to once a month. But they're always in regular, ongoing, and they have an individual plan for them designed by themselves and their caseworker so that they're working on it together. And there's more cooperation and collaboration, and they're staying stabilized. I can show you an actual model where that is happening, and then you're not spending so much money on things that don't work. And then you're actually getting people to stay housed and stay stabilized because they've got ongoing case management in a housing situation. Like, I've got a, someone in safes right now who's, who had to have surgery because she doesn't have access to a kitchen where she can, you know, deal with her medical needs. She's a behavioral health, you know, category person, but even if she went into housing, she would still need someone to, like, help cook her food because she, even if a dietitian from her doctor said, here, eat these foods, she would not do it, you know, to clear up her medical condition. She needs somebody there to be, like, modeling, standing in front of her, modeling the behavior that she needs to do. And that's what I'm talking about, this, that we need more of the state-licensed social work, you know, engaged with this person housing.
Very good. Thank you both. And upon further reflection, we voted on a ghost amendment.
I was wondering about that.
So entertaining though it was, and good practice for all of us, I withdraw said ghost amendment. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you all. Appreciate it. We have two second readings to finish up today. The first is S. 411.
Authorize a class exemption to implement job order contracting for asphalt paving, repair, and concrete work.
This is a second reading of an ordinance. We've already had a first reading, testimony, and a presentation. Any further discussion? For the record, I have reviewed the record, and this is a substitute ordinance that we're actually voting on. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. The substitute ordinance is adopted. Next item is 412, also a second reading.
Authorize a competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder and provide payment for construction of the South Portland Burlingame Phase One Sewer Rehabilitation Project, number E. 10680, for an estimated cost of $2,112,000.
This is also a second reading. Colleagues, we've already heard a presentation and taken public testimony. I've reviewed the record. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted, and everything else, including the two items from this morning's consent agenda, have all been moved, and we also moved the four-fifths, correct? We continue that. Very good. We are adjourned.[1747.98]